Start with Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, yeah, that's good stuff.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, I will ask for the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I will second that motion. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I should probably mention Ron's gone today, so. I believe vacation.
I think so.
Next is the approval of the minutes of November 30th, 2016.
I will make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is approval of claims for payments totaling $107,125.39.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims for payment for this week.
It's been, I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now we have Cory here. Discussion on new purchase of, for the IRVM department. Go ahead Cory.
Alright, well, I'd like to purchase a new, it's a forester head for a boom more and all the brush we're doing, cutting, just to make everything just that much easier. We applied for a grant for it. We got denied, and so I'd just like to purchase it now through our, through our budget.
The money's in the budget?
Money's in the budget, yep. We have money in the budget for it.
And what, what this'll do is help grind, it's a, it's kinda like we already have, it's just a smaller version of a stump grinder.
It's a cutter, grinder, and a mulcher, so instead of putting the stuff we cut into a chipper and having a two-man process, this just does everything for us.
And, and this is an attachment that already goes on what we have?
Yeah, we already have a boom for it, it's just an attachment, you know?
Oh, alright.
But it's not like a whole new piece of equipment, it's just a, just a head.
Just the head, okay.
And this'll knock down time when you're trimming trees, so you don't have to go back in and...
We don't have to go back in with the chipper, it's just one person can go out, cut it, grind it, and it's all mulched up into little pieces, so it's not gonna look a lot cleaner, cleaner cuts and everything.
Okay, good.
From my standpoint, it's in your budget. I, I don't know that we have to approve the purchase of it. If you have it in your budget, you're authorized to do that.
Okay, just to, just to inform you and...
But I like the information, and I like the fact we're cutting trees out and pushing the, I've seen where you've been. I can now get my tractor down the roads without being scraped on some of them.
Yeah, and there's still a lot more to do, so it's...
Yeah.
I think it's a never-ending process.
Yep.
Sounds like more, more will get done with less manpower, so that frees you up to do other things, so...
Exactly.
And you keep running this until the snow buries, or even with...
Probably even with it, as long as, besides, I mean, when it's wet, like now the roads are kinda sloppy and wet with the rain and stuff, it's a little tougher, but yeah, when it's winter and the roads are hard and...
Okay.
You can definitely, you know?
I've got lots of spots for you.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah, it sounds good to me, too.
Well, thanks for the update on that. It looks like, I mean, we already own the equipment, it looks like it's a nice attachment that'll help speed up and probably help us try to get ahead of the program.
Yeah.
You got, you got a big job in front of you on that.
Okay, well, thanks Cory.
Next I have is a Small Business Development Center presentation request for funding.
We have Kimberly here from the Small Business Development Center in Fort Dodge. The center in Fort Dodge has partnered with Harden County over the last, I don't know how many years, but they technically help cover small business development here and are a partner of ours. Actually, they're beyond their territory. Harden County's not actually in their territory, but they have been very helpful, so they're requesting some assistance in helping to meet our needs, and so I'll turn it over to Kimberly for some discussion.
I have some packets here for the supervisors, first of all, so I don't know who that is exactly.
Just take two of them there.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Lance.
Thank you.
But, I guess the first thing that is in your packet is a, a letter to the supervisors. And that is signed by Stephanie Koenig, which is our regional director, my regional director, and she had planned to be here with you today, however, she is in the NICU in Duane with her new baby, and they're both doing well, so that's the important thing. But Stephanie and I have been very present in Harden County. I just started with the SBDC in March, and my prior experience to this is 32 years of being a small business owner, and still am with my husband, but decided at the point of my youngest graduating that I'd like to do something different, so here I am, and I enjoy it very much. It's a totally different, a different perspective, but it's also very familiar territory as a business owner. But we do travel to Harden County quite a bit, visiting with good people that do business here and people that want to start businesses here as well. So, having said that, again, the first page in, on the, in your packet that is a letter is from Stephanie, and it is an appeal for, for some financial help from Harden County. We, our numbers here have jumped dramatically as far as the number of clients that we've seen just this last fiscal year. There's been a big jump. Some of that is due to the fact that there's two of us and we're able to fulfill those, meet those needs, but also there's just a greater, we're, we're getting more need as people are starting to know, and I think Cindy is good at letting people know that the SBDC is here and available as well. And just to give you an overview of what we do exactly, there are some brochures in your packet that do address what we do. There is also a, in the back of your brochure, there's, or your folder, there is a, a publication put out by the SBDC that does cover numbers when you're, when you have some spare time, you can, you can flip through that, but it does show what are statewide, what we're doing. And then behind these two brochures in your folder is also just an update as far as the 2016 fiscal year impact that we've had, and that's just a very recent update. But to really bring it down to earth and give you some real feeling of what we do, we meet with somebody who's interested in starting a business, and we give them a packet, bring along one of these folders, and for them, of course, obviously, it's gonna be very different. It's gonna have a checklist in it of what you need to know, what you need to do, it's gonna have additional information about who you contact for sales tax and IRS.gov and how you walk through all the FICA and just all that kind of thing as an employer. We go through the business plan, which is quite extensive, and that, this, this information's not in your folder, but I do wanna tell you what we do, and to really find, to put a finer point on it, I think it's easier to give you some examples of things that we're working with that aren't necessarily in Harden County for confidentiality reasons. We can't talk about anybody specifically, and, but we do have projects going on in Harden County, but for instance, retaining businesses and retaining employees is a huge focus of ours as well. And so working with, if somebody has a loan through the SBA and they need to restructure that, we're a direct liaison to go walk them through that process with the client, with the SBA and the bank. We're, we're the link that brings all that together and we keep it moving, which can be frustrating for the client because that client's busy working in their business every day, and as small business owners, that's, you know, imperative, and so that's one way that we assist. Also, bringing together important people in the economic development network that can help bring a project together. Cindy and I are working on a project pretty diligently to hopefully see it come to reality, but just bringing the right people together and staying on top of things and making sure that the client is getting what they need to take place and keep those balls rolling instead of things going stagnant, so that's something else. Just being very aware of the economic development needs, succession planning is huge in our rural communities. We don't do succession planning, the legal side of it, but we do have those conversations with business owners, trying to help seamless transitions take place so that it's not so noticeable to the public, and that's very seamless and that the new owners can take over while the old owners exit seamlessly. Lots of conversations about rural Iowa in that way, no matter what size the community is. So, our funding is something that is interesting. We are supported by the SBA largely, and from there, we are supported by the state legislature. We are connected, our hosting region is Iowa State University. We do, as one of your brochures says, market research, we do provide in-depth market research for economic development groups for our clients from Iowa State and you and I. We, the professional services that we provide are multifaceted. We reach out to any kind of resource that we have to help people the best that we can. And our services are of no charge to our clients, which is huge because, as we all know, that consulting services are normally very expensive, and in this case, they're not to the client, and so to be able to keep doing that and to keep traveling to the clients and to the counties, we do have to do matching funds, and that's why I'm here today to do that request. Do you have any questions? I know I have thrown a lot out.
Cindy brought it to us here, probably two, three weeks ago, and one of the things you mentioned, you were not in our region, but you've been down here, you've been present in our area for years.
Right.
Who currently is in our region, and how much representation have they even given us?
Ames is the one, the agency that's supposed to cover us. I'm in my sixth year and I've never seen them in Harden County. So, through, I think, our Mid-Iowa Growth Partnership, since Webster County is a major part of that, that region, we partnered with them. Ellsworth Community College is providing office space at their south campus for them to use whenever they need it. We were able to get a grant where we helped in providing some printers and that type of thing in the past for them to use while they were there, so it's been a good partnership, and from my standpoint, their services have just been phenomenal for us. I get a, a client coming in that wants to start a new business, and, and they don't have any idea where they get from their idea to actually operating the business. They've not thought of a business plan, they just know what they wanna do, and so I can turn it over to them and they can work through all the details, do the research. We have had some success here in Harden County through their support, so it's been invaluable to us.
So, do you work mostly from referrals from Cindy, or do you visit businesses, or do they know to come to you otherwise, or...
So, right now, they, we work through referrals from Cindy, and also if people search the Iowa SBDC or, or through the SBA, we'll get referrals. With funding and increasing our partnership with Harden County this way, we can then become more involved and entrenched in Harden County and start workshops and actually, you know, going door-to-door to some businesses and things like that, and visiting people. So that's the big difference with the funding, is being able to really dig deeper and partner in a deeper way, and also then also working, I mean, Cindy, we have a very good working relationship anyway, but then working even more closely together as far as, you know, what do you need? What, what are, an example would be, you know, a QuickBooks, a QuickBooks workshop, is that something that's needed here? Or the succession planning, having those conversations, or there's many other things, but Kimberly's done even one-on-one training with the local business in the QuickBooks and trying to bring them up to speed, and when Deb Crosser was in, she would refer clients, Jefferson does as well, so...
Okay. That would, I mean, I'm just thinking, you know, we've got a new business or maybe two in, in Eldora, and I didn't know if that was something that you go around to any new businesses, you know, but that's what you're requesting funding for, so you can do that.
Yeah, so then we could be, have a greater presence here, yeah, and dig deeper and do that, yeah.
And I'm sure the one from Story County or Ames, they probably, you know, have a bigger area, or bigger population than businesses there, or...
His center down in Ames is very different. It's very research-based, I would say, a lot of it, not all of it, but it's very different.
Okay.
We are much more connected. I think if this, Harden County is a better match for our center, I think.
I would agree.
Than it is for Ames, because we, we are much more rural-based.
Yes.
And we have, it's just different. The dynamics are different, and I, I really do believe this is a better match. I think back when, and it goes back for some years, as Cindy said, that Ames has not been able to cover this, or it just hasn't responded well. So setting that aside, I think Lisa Shimkat, when she was in Fort Dodge, stepped in and made sure that there was some coverage here, and we've kept it up, so.
We appreciate that.
And as you know, Harden County is kind of its own little area in a sense, you know, we're on the edge of Region Six, we're on the edge of Mid-Iowa Growth, I mean, so we're kind of in a little vacuum here at times, so we have to pull resources where we can.
Okay.
And the request was for $2,000, correct?
It is, and I did have a formal invoice.
And when I, when I brought it to the supervisors a few weeks ago, because of loss and what you have done to approve it, it seemed like it would be a very good fit for, for those funds.
I agree. Okay. Well, we appreciate the work that you've done in the past, and I, I guess I'm in support of this if it, if it continues to help our small businesses, I mean, 'cause I know how they're struggling too, so, so I, I personally don't have a problem with it. Are you ready to make a decision, I guess, or, I mean...
And I can certainly, if you have any questions that you, anybody else has any questions, I can address those, and I can certainly step out so you can have your own discussion.
Oh, we're open, you can stay in.
Yeah, yeah, it's open.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with a motion.
I, I guess I'll go ahead and make the motion to, to support, support them with the $2,000 to be paid from the local option sales tax funds for benefit of economic development.
I will second that motion. As discussion, thank you for being down in our territory, even though it's not yours.
Thank you.
For the years that you've been here also.
It's, yeah, it's easy to work with good people, so.
Well, it's great, we appreciate it.
So thanks for putting up with us then.
Thanks for putting up with us.
Any other discussion?
No.
Not at this point.
Yeah, I'm hearing no more discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I'm just not sure, you know, I didn't, I don't know if, didn't know if you'd prefer to wait until Ron could be involved, and I, I think it's very worthwhile.
Yep. Thank you. Next is number eight, which is discussion of and setting date for first consideration on amendment to ordinance number 13 Uniform Rural Address System Ordinance for Harden County. Mica.
It's me. So, what this is covering is, we have not had an update to this ordinance since 1993, I believe, so it was a little outdated, and what this ordinance covers is, kinda lays out the initial addressing that when Harden County went from rural route to 911 addressing, and then it kinda lays out the responsibilities of each of the components in the, under the 911 board for maintaining and street signs and the rural, the blue rural address signs, and the mapping that goes along with it. So what we're proposing in this amendment, it's, it's a lot of updates in a lot of different areas. GIS as a department did not exist in 1993. The original ordinance has a lot of the responsibility in the engineer's office for assigning addresses, and that's not how things are done, so I tried to update this to reflect reality and how we would like it to go proceeding forward. Part, besides the fact it just needed to be updated and it was outdated, the other push to change it now is, we would like to change how rural addresses, signs are actually installed in, when they're requested by property owners. Currently, we have a system where I assign the address in the GIS department, and then we send a request to third-party company who supplies the signs and the labor to install them, and they're not in the county very often. We don't get a high number of requests. I think it's important, when we talk about this, that we're talking, 25 addresses might get assigned a year that need a new, a blue address sign, so we're not a high volume, and so they only come when they've got enough to make it worth their trip, which might be once, maybe twice a year. So somebody might request a sign, and they don't get a blue address sign for six months, and that's not uncommon at all. It's just not adequate, it's not, from a 911 point of view, it's not good, but we don't have signage, if we have a broken sign or a replacement sign, it's the same problem, so it's been really frustrating, and the company that does this for us, they've been pretty honest, they, they would like to get us out of the business of doing this, we're not a high-volume enough customer for them.
They do street addresses too, right?
They don't, no.
Okay.
We do that, so we already do the 911 street at signs are done by our sign maintenance person in the, in the secondary roads department, and, and so we wanna basically bring in-house the, the blue rural address signs so that when we have this address request, we have the freedom to like move things along a little better, instead of just waiting for a company to come once or twice a year to install address signs. So what we're putting in, in, and part of the change of this address is we wanted to reflect reality, so the, the workflow will not change for street signs, those are maintained and ordered and installed by secondary roads. Addresses will be assigned by the GIS department, and the secondary roads person will assist, or will basically will help order the signs, just like you order street signs, so that we can get them in, in the house. We've got a couple options on how we can do that, and we're gonna look at the most cost-effective, both in cost and in time. And then what we are going to do, and what we put down this proposal and what was approved by the, the 911 board, is we will supply the materials, the sign, the rivets, and the blues, the sign post, all of that to the property owner and let them install it themselves with instructions on where to do that. You know, don't put it in the rotorway where it's gonna get hit by something, you know, put it up by a fence line, you know, there's, there's kind of rules.
Do your one call.
What?
Do your one call.
Do a one call, exactly, and then what we propose is, 'cause what we have found is, and I've been kind of informally quizzing customers, especially ones that, you know, are a little frustrated because they haven't gotten their sign and they requested it many, many months ago. Over half easily, if maybe 60 to 70% of our address requests are coming from businesses with hot confinements, and they are more than happy to do this, so I think we just have to remember the low volume that we're dealing with. And so we're gonna put it in the hands and, and of the owners and supply everything for them, it won't cost anything except for installing the post, and then they have 90 days to comply, and then if they don't, secondary roads will, will do it, but there'll be some costs, they'll have to be compensated for time and, and materials to do that. The materials for the 911 sign are covered by the 911 board, and that's not gonna change, so basically, the secondary roads is not going to incur any additional costs for the, the signs. There's gonna be a little bit of time, but we're fitting it in with what he already does with ordering signs, and I've been working with John, and we're going to use the engineer's work order program, so it's gonna be very seamless, I have no doubt that it's gonna be pretty minimal for him. And he's already dealing with some of these sign issues and people not having rural address signs, he's already kind of been involved, so this is just gonna empower both he and I to, to be able to make some changes. It's very frustrating to get calls from the public when they have signs and there's nothing I can do. It's very frustrating. So anyway, what I'm asking for you guys is to, to look through this ordinance number 13 update and, and pass it, you know, do what, do what you need to do to, and ask me any questions. This has gone to the 911 board, we've had a couple meetings on it, and everybody is, is informed, and Sheriff's Office, Secondary Roads, we've all kind of, I've been kind of discussing this ad nauseam for the last year, so.
You've been on this for over three years.
Yeah. This is the year it's gonna happen.
Yeah, you got all your dots connected to make it...
Yeah, it, it, like I said, it comes down to the fact that we're not talking about a high volume, and it, the system we currently have in place, even if it costs us a little bit more, and you have the old adage of we're get what we pay for, yeah, we are totally getting what we pay for, which is not very good service, and, and the company would be the first one to say, you know, that we are not a priority. If we were to ever come in and say, let's say all the blue rural address signs had to now be red, or they had to be like five inches taller, or something radical, that is a time when we'd bring in like a third-party company and they would come in and do a sweep across the whole county and do, you know, 'cause that's more than one county employee could do, especially in a set amount of time. But this, this one-off business is something that we can totally handle in, in-house, and I think it's important that when we assign these 911 addresses, we get signs up there in front of these properties, so people know where these addresses are. From a 911 point of view, it's, it's a safety concern.
And it's come to the E-911 board, and they're totally in support of, of the changes.
You know, we might have the occasional person who doesn't do it, compliance issues, and, you know, part of it is explaining to them why, why it's important, you know, it's for their own safety, when it all comes down to it, but that's why we've put in some faults that we can recoup costs and just have one of our county employees do it, and, and many people may just say, "Fine with me."
Yep.
Well, like I say, I know you've been working on this for a long time.
It's such a small thing, but jeez, when you're updating something from 1993.
But you're also working, you're also working with other departments to make something happen.
Yeah.
And dealing with other budgets, and, oh, you did a nice job with this.
If you have any questions, we want you to take a look at it. I know I gave it to you guys a while ago, just let me know, and...
So what I'm looking for today is setting a date for the first consideration on the amendment.
I'll make a motion to set January...
It has to be published, right?
Yeah. January 11th? Oh, wait, yes, January 11th, looking at the wrong calendar.
Oh, yeah, we have got our 17 calendars.
Yes, down in the corner, January 11th, so...
Is that enough publication time, Nancy?
It is. Do you have the time?
Read, read it.
10:02.
Tell me the whole motion.
So we'll set the date of January 2nd at, at 10:02 for the first consideration on the amendment to ordinance number 13 Uniform Rural Address System Ordinance for Harden County.
What date did you say again?
January 11th.
Okay.
At 10:02.
I will second that. It's been moved and seconded to set the date for January 11th for the first consideration at 10:02 on the amendment to ordinance number 13. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mica. Ooh, I didn't bring my full packet down. Next I have is the auditor's monthly report.
I'll make a motion to approve the auditor's monthly report in the amount of $1,170 for the month of November.
I will second that. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is the approval of the Sheriff's Union contract.
I will make a motion to approve the Sheriff's Union contract for next fiscal year.
I will second that. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? It's a one-year contract. We've been talking back and forth with our union negotiator, and it was a pretty smooth contract this time.
It was, it was, it was very good.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next I have is abatement of 2015 taxes, Section 12 of Tipton Township.
I'll make a motion to approve the abatement of the 2015 tech, 15 taxes for property in Section 12 of Tipton Township, and the reason for the abatement is it was originally incorrectly changed, or the, the use, the land use was incorrectly changed. or the land use was incorrectly changed, so it's now been corrected.
I'll second the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now I have is a resolution to approve the 2016 Urban Renewal Plan Amendment for the Pine Lake Ethanol Urban Renewal Area.
I will make a motion to approve the 2016 Urban Renewal Plan Amendment for the Pine, well, no, it's, yes, the 2016 amendment to the plan for the Pine Lakes Ethanol Urban Renewal Area and...
Let me go ahead and second that.
Okay.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? This is adding the 6.62 acres to the Pine Lake Urban Renewal Area to help facilitate the growth and development in the county.
Correct. This amendment conforms to the general plan of the county and is necessary and appropriate to facilitate the proper growth and development of the county in accordance with sound planning standards and local community objectives.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now I need to set date and time for an ordinance providing for the division of the taxes levied on taxable property in 2016 amendment to the Pine Lake Ethanol Urban Renewal Area pursuant to Section 403.19 of the Code of Iowa.
Okay, so we'll, for convenience sake, I think we set the same date for the first consideration on the ordinance for January 11th. And should we say 10:10?
I need that in a motion.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to set January 11th at 10:10 a.m. for the first reading of an ordinance providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the 2016 amendment to the Pine Lakes, or no, not an amendment, it's its own ordinance, I'm sorry. Which went to Section 403.19 of the Code of Iowa.
I will second that. Any discussion? Did we word that correctly? Nancy, did we word that correctly? Okay. Make a sure. Any other discussion?
I will attach it. It will be numbered Ordinance 47 for reference.
Okay.
No more discussion. Roll call.
Renee?
Aye.
Lance?
Aye. Motion carries. From there, I got utility permits. I don't have a utility permit. No update from Secondary Roads, Darrell's in meetings of ISAC. And I can go to other business. And other business, we got Santa coming Saturday from 11:00 to 1:00.
Coming where?
Upstairs, yep, to the rotunda. Anything else? Any other business? Hearing none, I can ask for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.